All right, good evening, everybody, and welcome to tonight's regular City of Cedar Falls City Council meeting for Monday, November 3rd. I will call this meeting in order. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Schultz.
Here.
Latta.
Here.
Cruz.
Here.
Hallbaker.
Here.
Gannfield.
Here.
Christman.
Here.
Dunn.
Here.
Are members present, Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And if willing and able, could everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you, everyone. I look for a motion to approve the minutes of October 20th, 2025.
So moved.
Motion seconded, and any discussion from council? Seeing none, any from the public? All seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries. Madam Clerk, any agenda revisions?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we had a Scrivener's err on item number nine of the Special Order of Business. Council has that in front of them. It was an incorrect year on page 18.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And that will take us to public forum, where speakers will have one opportunity to speak for up to five minutes on topics relevant to city business. If there is an item later in the agenda that you'd like to speak to, please wait for that item. Otherwise, anything else would be at this time. So does anyone here like to speak for public comment tonight? All right, seeing none, that'll move us to special -- oh.
I do have transparency also, if that's something that could be picked up.
See, we don't have a way to display it, but this is something you'd like to just pass around?
Sure. Do you want it to go to council?
If you just want to go ahead and hand it down to Jim, we'll pass it around. Thank you. Thank you, Director. Just name and address, please.
Kim Jensen-Jordan, 2018 Minnetoka. Here again tonight, would like to just talk about the renaming of the Cedar Falls Health Trust and our obligation to past, present, and future. The past is Sartori Health Trust Fund. The renaming, I don't recall seeing three reads, and I really did not see it on any agenda that we were looking to absorb that. So if we could get a clarity onto that question, and then also just some clarity as to making sure that the Bell's Trust Fund money stays within it. I know that we have an election tomorrow, and one of the people running for Ward III is mentioning that he's from the Mercy Cedar Falls Trust Fund. So now we're looking at, instead of going to Sartori, we're Mercy One Cedar Falls Trust Fund, and we have a Corona or Cara healthcare that's just beginning in the western home communities. So there seems to be a lot of things that are going on, and the taxpayers are city business, and it is when there's transparency, we can have accountability. But when there's no transparency, it makes it kind of cluttered, and we're not really sure as to what's going on. It really feels, right now, that we have more of a subsequently partnership that we, the taxpayers of Cedar Falls, have been drug into, where it looks like we're taking a property away from the poor. We're trying to make a new temple to praise the work and to glorify the past and the present and the future, which is supposed to make us think that we're leading into more glory. And these comments all come from scripture readings. So it's nothing new, but it's a similar time, and we do not have the exclusive on this. It's within our heart to make sure that we provide and we maintain healthcare coverage and sites that are already existing. Nowhere in our capital improvements have we seen it in the last 11 -- well, 2011. So there are some questions as to when the new hospital might be built, what we can do with the repurposing of 515. There was only one person that reached out to want to talk about it, and then there was another council representative that was able to say, try to find something else. We -- healthcare is, when we look at, we've been pulled into it, it's monopolies. This is not a healthcare system. It's a software company. It's monopolies that have accumulated other hospitals all around the United States. So we've started on the coastlines, and we're moving, migrating into the heartland and into the center of the country, the Midwest. When it starts to get here, that means that we're not going to have the choices that we're going to want to have. We have the wealthy, the insurance companies, the pharmaceuticals, and the monopolies of the healthcare, kind of wanting us to partner with them. We do not want to praise a temple. We do not need $165 million new build, but we do, as $40,000, need two sites. We need to have an obligation and some transparency that does say, this council doesn't matter if it's going to be a split, but has an interest to provide and to service an area that we're not paying taxes on, and hold that accountable to the surrounding communities, to the EMS. When we say we are EMS, we are a certificate of need for emergency services that happen throughout the United States, and the progression of movement potentially through Mayo into Iowa could be a real thing, and it could be something that, in this area of Blackhawk County, we could begin a movement of that. But we need to have sites available, and we need to have certificates, and we need to have an opportunity to dream fearlessly.
Thank you, Ms. Jensen, of this time. So, thank you. And I'm not sure what renaming you were referring to, but I'll maybe send you a follow-up email, just to ask for some clarifying information.
Yeah, let me just show you right.
Now, that is time, we need to move forward with other public comment. Ms. Jordan Jensen, please. Thank you. Is there anyone else for a public comment this evening? All right, seeing none, that will close the public forum, and that moves us to staff updates, and Director Shagri, I believe we've got a few.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to give a brief update regarding two grants that we've submitted for previously this year. The first one being the Cedar Prairie Trail Replacement Grant. So the section of trail I'm referring to is in the southeast corner near Camping World and John Deere off of Ridgeway Avenue. We jointly went after a grant with Waterloo, because the city limit line actually is through the center of that trail. We were recently notified that we were awarded $380,000 for the replacement of that trail. So we will be working with Waterloo for a contract moving forward. And that program was through the Transportation Alternative Program, and that's administered through the Iowa Department of Transportation. Second one, we were actually notified on Friday, this last Friday, from the Iowa DNR about our REAP grant. Last year, we discussed the Big Woods Campground Expansion with you folks. That was the expansion of approximately 20 new sites and an additional ADA-compliant shower and restroom facility. So we were awarded $150,000 through that program, so.
Thank you, Director, and thank you. I know it was a lot of work on both those grants, so excited to hear we got them both. Any other questions from council on those? All right, seeing none, that'll move us to Special Order of Business, item number two, further continuance to November 17, 2025 of a public hearing to consider entering into an agreement for private development with River Place Properties to LC. Motion approved?
So moved.
Second.
Motion seconded. Again, quick background, we're still working with the developer on this. I had a few things in the contract, we're working with legal on to go back and forth, so just at this point, a continuance there, so. Any other discussion from council? Seeing none, any from the public? Also seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries. It moves to item number three, public hearing on proposed amendments to Chapter 20 subdivisions and Chapter 26 zoning of the Code of Ordinances relative to parkland dedication, including establishing a process, methods, and formula for parkland dedication, updating definitions, and establishing rules for land suitability and location. Do we have a motion to receive and file approved publications?
So moved.
Second.
Motion seconded, and all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries. Madam Clerk, any written communications?
I have no written communications, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. And just as a quick update for everybody, if you remember, this was, we had the committee discussion to kind of go over the high-level information. This is bringing forward those actual zoning changes. And for staff comments tonight, I believe we have Rita Trapp from -- I can't, I'm sorry, I don't remember the consultancy name, but Rita, if you remember, she presented here in person previously for the project, and she's going to give us a quick run-through. Thank you, Rita.
Good evening. Good evening. Can you all hear me?
Yep.
Great. Again, Rita Trapp with HKGI, and I appreciate the opportunity to just do a short presentation. I'm going to just give a quick overview for everybody in the public to make sure that they have an awareness of what is being proposed this evening. So just to kind of recap where we are at, park dedication-wise, the City of Cedar Falls does not have a dedication formula or requirements in their existing code. Cities are allowed, based on Iowa statutes, to require a reasonable portion of buildable land to be dedicated to the public or preserved for future use. This needs to be tied specifically to the subdivision land or a subdivision of land or residential plan growth. So it isn't something that would occur as part of a typical building permit, but would be directly tied to new growth or new subdivisions in the community, whether they are single-family or townhouses or apartments. As I said, the city does not have a dedication formula, and so that means that every time there's a project, the city needs to negotiate with the developer on a case-by-case basis. So as part of the recent Parks Master Plan that was being developed, city staff included a provision that provided us the opportunity to work with you to create park dedication provisions, which would establish the clear expectations for park dedication. The goal is that this is, will provide developers a predictable requirement so that they will know at the beginning of the process what would be expected in terms of a land dedication or if they would choose a cash dedication, how much that would be. And it also ensures that over the timeframe of your development, that you have enough parkland to meet community needs. So we base this on your current parkland, Parks Master Plan that was recently completed. There are changes -- you can move forward, Michelle, thank you. There are changes to a variety of sections in the subdivision and zoning code. Many of them are made for consistency and clarity. There is one key provision that is being added to the subdivision code. You can see it is Article IV, the Neighborhood Parkland Dedication. This has kind of four or five subsections that have the information that a developer and the city staff need to apply, parkland dedication rules. The first part will have a dedication formula, which I'll walk through in a moment. We'll also talk about land suitability in a moment. Park location, this is trying to get across, making sure that we put parks in areas that are nearby to residents so that they all have the ability to easy and conveniently go to neighborhood parks. We'll talk a little bit in a moment about the dedication methods, and then there will be some requirements for developer subdividers to prepare the land prior to dedication to meet the needs of the city. So those are the key provisions of your Neighborhood Parkland Dedication. I do want to walk through specifically the dedication formula. That was created in concert with staff. Again, we based it on the analysis of the recently adopted Park Master Plan. The goal was to identify historically and in the future how much parkland you want per resident in order to serve residents. And it's a little bit different from city to city, so we always try and tie the development or the refinement of a park dedication ordinance to the development of a Park Master Plan. It was determined that the desire for the City of Cedar Falls was six acres of parklands per 1,000 residents, so we're able to use that in our formula. So a developer that's coming in for a project would take the number of units proposed and multiply that by the required parkland per person, and then multiply that by persons per household. We're using a census formula for persons per household, so that's something that's based on actual measures of how many people, for example, live in a single-family home. This is a way that a developer, no matter the size of the project, can get a sense of how much parkland there would be required per person. You will see a note at the bottom that talks about having a cap on the required parkland at no more than 10% of the total land area. That's just to ensure, for example, if you would have an apartment dwelling, they might have a high number of people on a small area of land, and we want to make sure that it's reasonable, that the land area that they might dedicate would be proportionate or available in their project. If we move to the next slide, I did want to highlight just briefly the land suitability requirements. We just want to make sure that the land that is dedicated is usable by the city. Historically, sometimes you might have a conversation where folks would give land that wouldn't be able to be used as a neighborhood park, so we want to make sure it has the shape and size that would make sense, and it has street frontage so that people can actually access the park, and we also want it visible for safety reasons. You will see on this slide a list, the credit wouldn't be given, for example, streams or wetlands or stormage drainage areas or steep slopes. I do want to note that this credit part is just, is not that they couldn't dedicate the land as part if the city would choose to accept it. It just means that if they have a specific requirement for the amount of land that they need to dedicate, that part of that land, they wouldn't get credit if the land met any of these criteria. So if you had a two-acre requirement, if you had an acre of wetland, you might be able to dedicate it to the city as part of the park, but you wouldn't get credit for it. So you would have to do two acres of reasonably usable land plus another acre for the wetland, for a total of three acres. That's just an example. Another element that we just wanted to talk about briefly is the dedication method. Primarily, the statute provides for land dedication. However, an applicant may request, and the city may agree to payment if fee in lieu of land. It's something that is available. You can also provide a combination of land dedication and fee in lieu, and this is just evaluated on a case-by-case basis. The most important part is that the city in the Parks Master Plan did identify neighborhood park districts, and so the intent is that the city will keep track of where the money is coming from in each of these districts, and make sure any of the land that is received as part of cash in lieu is spent in the general area. This map was created based on kind of major roadways or other boundaries, barriers that would prevent people from easily accessing neighborhood parks. So that is a part of this and something that your finance department is well aware of and will work with your community development staff and park staff to implement. And then the only other element that we wanted to mention just briefly, the recommendations, you can move forward. This was reviewed and voted on by the Planning and Zoning Commission, as well as the Park and Recreation Commission, and both did recommend making these amendments, as you can see. And then finally, we're just asking this evening that you take action on this element, and I can answer any questions that you might have. If I didn't cover it, I know there's more information I presented last time, but we wanted to give an overview, and then I can answer questions on any particular details of the code requirements.
Perfect. Thank you, Rita. And at this time, any clarifying questions or comments from council before we open up to public comment?
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
I read in the notes that it was actually past PNZ 80. Did I misinterpret that? So 7-1 on the slide?
It says 7-1.
It was indeed 7-1? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other clarifying questions from council? All right, seeing none, we'll open up to public comment on this item. Just name and address, please.
Craig Fairbanks, 405 Spruce Hills Drive. I just have a couple of brief questions that have come to my mind as we have taken, expanded the floodplain to 500-year floodplain in the city. I would ask a clarifying question if we limit that to the 100-year floodplain, which may be in play, where a 500-year floodplain is not, and I just don't have an answer on, in any of the stuff that I read that that's, how that is parceled out, so.
If I can clarify quickly, are you just wondering, would that land be available as parkland space under this or qualify as park space under this formula?
Yeah, the five-year floodplain.
Yeah, the five-year.
Not the 100-year, that's obvious, but the five-year floodplain. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fairbanks. Any other public comment for this item tonight? Just name, please.
Kim Jensen-Jordan. Recent property was for sale up around the hospital, and the hospital to the north section has a park that's within it. It extends all the way over to Division Street when you look at the coloring. So just curious, I didn't know that was delineated as the hospital has been in existence, but it's appearing now just within.
Jordan, is this related to the specifics of the proposed change here?
It would be for any parks that are going to be in potential developmental areas, and how that all of a sudden has popped up. So just wanting to let you know, I'm kind of paying attention and not understanding, you know, exactly what the, where the transparency is with that. It's quite a long park, and it's a wet space.
Ms. Jordan, this is just relating to new park space going forward, the policy, not discussing other parks and specifics of other parks. So if you have any comments specific to this policy change, we can discuss those, but not discussions about other parks in the city.
I guess my concern would be just to make sure that it's a safe area and that there isn't going to be some roundabouts within it, especially if there's wet areas.
Again, Ms. Jordan, this has nothing to do with roundabouts, so.
The planning.
If you have something specific to this, otherwise we need to keep it focused.
And laying out the land for that area for a park.
Thank you, Ms. Jordan. Anyone else for a public comment this evening? All right, seeing none, we will then close the public hearing and look for a motion to pass an ordinance amending Chapter 20 subdivisions and Chapter 26 zoning of the Code of Ordinances relative to parkland dedication, including establishing a process, methods, and formula for parkland dedication, updating definitions, and establishing rules for land suitability and location upon its first consideration.
So moved.
Second.
Motion seconded. And quickly, Ms. Trapp, this may be for you. Can you just clarify that question about the floodplain? Is there a difference between how 500-year and 100-year floodplain is treated and that?
So the floodplain was just mentioned in general in the code, so I don't think it is treated differently. Your staff may know the difference between the impact of 100-year and 500-year on any particularness in the city, but it's just written more in generalities that the floodplain is not included, and that's specifically to make sure that we don't have flooding that might occur.
Yep. And Director Sheets, could you clarify that quick?
Just as she stated, it's noted in the ordinance in general as floodplain, so we would take that to include all floodplain, 100, 500-year.
Okay, thank you. Otherwise, open up for council discussion.
Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
Question on the payment in lieu of, if there is any clarity on how that's calculated? I know it's case-by-case, but is there a general guideline that could be stated?
In terms of maybe a little bit more clarifying question of what that is, just in, how do we come up with the actual amount of the value?
Correct.
Is that what the question is?
I mean, that and will a developer have a chance to buy out all of the required park? You're going to not let them do that. I would assume you're going to make them have some park, maybe not all, that the formula dictates.
So there's a couple of elements that would be considered as part of that. One, I didn't talk about it today, but one element that is in here is the idea that we want to make sure that the parks are of sufficient size to be useful and meaningful. You don't want to have a whole series of small parks in each individual subdivision. And so one element that will be looked at is placement. So if the development is occurring in a place where the city needs or desires to have a park, then we might look at, for example, putting a portion of the parkland on the edge of that development, and if they had, didn't want to or couldn't do the size that we needed, there might be some negotiation for that, the land that they wouldn't be actually dedicating. If, for example, they were a very small subdivision and the land that they would be required to be dedicated would be so small, they could have a conversation with the city about only doing the cash, and that's why there's an opportunity to do land dedication and then to request a full cash in lieu or a combination approach. What typically happens is that you identify the amount of parkland that is required, and then you identify what is the fair market value of that parkland dedication. There's a specific provision, and if you wanted to know, it looks like in your packet, it's on page six of where the actual ordinance language is. Under amount of payment, it says the fair market value of the parkland dedication shall be determined by a qualified real estate appraiser who is accessible both to the city and the subdivider. So typically, what happens is that the amount is set, and then the fair market value of that amount
that amount of land is set, and that's what is negotiated between the city and the developer. Did that answer the question that you had?
Yes. That's good. Thank you.
Perfect. Yes.
Thank you, counselor. Any questions, discussion from council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
It's not a deliberative piece, but on that scribbler's error I was pointing out earlier, I just wanted to make sure that made the record. Tonight's packet does show in the detailed portion that it passed with eight i's unanimously. The minutes in both preceding planning and zoning meetings and hearings did show 7-1. I just want to clarify, it was indeed a 7-1 vote, but let the record show the scribbler's error in tonight's packet. I don't think it actually makes a difference to the ordinance passage.
No. Thank you. You got that? Thank you, counselor.
That's on page 20, if you need it, Kim.
Any other discussion, council?
Just one quick one. Similar to what I said at the last meeting, I would rather have lesser right-of-way and more land dedicated to parks. I think that would be something worth looking at. I noted that Ankeny and Urbandale exclude the right-of-way in calculations as they would, because it strips along the streets. But if we could see less right-of-way and more park, I think it'd add more value to the subdivision and the homes, that sort of thing. Makes more sense to me. Thank you.
Thank you, counselor. Any additional discussion from council? All right. Seeing none, requires a roll call vote, please.
All members voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. That motion carries. That moves us to item number four, public hearing on the proposed rezoning from A1 Agricultural District to M1P Planned Light Industrial District of property located north of West Ridgeway Avenue and east of South Union Road. Do we have a motion to receive and file?
So moved. Second.
Motion seconded, and all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. The motion carries. Madam Clerk, any written communications?
I have no written communications, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. And then, for staff comments, I believe we have Planner Michelle Peaslee. Thank you, Michelle.
Thank you. The pieces of land as proposed for rezoning are two pieces that are next to the industrial park. When the industrial park came into the city, it was in '22. These two properties had residents on them. So, the criteria for rezoning is very simple. Does it comply with the comprehensive plan? Is there water, sewer, all the public services? And then, is there an adequate street network, as shown in the staff report and the slide above? The answer is yes. These lots will be combined with a revised plat that you'll see in the future, and they'll have all those services connecting to existing streets. Part of this is also updating the master plan for the industrial park. And the revised industrial park will have a loop trail continuing south to meet with Technology Parkway, and then continue on to Innovation Drive. The berm that was between the industrial park and these two properties will be removed, and tree screening will be added along South Union Drive. The design standards will continue throughout the development. And with that, the Planning and Zoning Commission voted to recommend approval for this, and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, Michelle. Any clarifying questions for Michelle at this time from council? All right. Seeing none, we'll now, go ahead.
Michelle, where's the berm at?
The, so, in the aerial photo, in the picture to the right, you can kind of see where the berm is.
Okay. Yep. I was thinking of the one that was north of there.
Right. And so, that will be removed.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, counselor. Any other questions from council? All right. Seeing none, we'll open up to the public for any public comments on this item tonight. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and look for a motion and resolution, or, excuse me, I was on the wrong one, passing the ordinance amending the zoning map by removing approximately 4.85 acres of land located north of West Ridgeway Avenue and east of South Union Road from A1 Agricultural District to M1P Planned Light Industrial District upon its first consideration.
So moved.
Motion seconded, and any discussion from council? Seeing none, requires a roll call vote, please.
All members voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. That moves us to item number five, public hearing on proposed amendment number two to the College Hill Urban Renewal Plan. Do we have a motion to receive and file?
So moved. Second.
Motion seconded, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed. That motion carries. Madam Clerk, any written communications?
I have no written communications, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. And then, for staff comments, we've got Shane Graham. We've seen Shane a couple times tonight, so get comfortable with him.
Yeah, the next five things. Four, five things. Thank you, Mayor. On the agenda tonight is amendment number two to the College Hill Urban Renewal Plan. City council set the date of hearing back on October 6th for this meeting. Basically, staff reviews the urban renewal plans. They all have projects and anticipated budgets within them. Staff was looking at the five-year CIP, looking and seeing what TIF-related funding for any projects were out there, which led to looking at all of our urban renewal plans, and that's why you'll see a number of them on the agenda tonight. Specifically for the College Hill Urban Renewal Plan, there's basically just two changes in the budget figures we're looking at. It's to update the budget number for development agreements and for the College Hill Maintenance and Improvements Project. So, those budgets are just being updated to reflect future costs when those projects come up. Part of the adoption process for urban renewal plan amendments is to notify the taxing entities. Both Blackhawk County and the Cedar Falls School Districts were invited to a consultation meeting on October 15th, which that agenda and minutes are in your packet. No one attended, so there was no comments from those taxing entities on that. So, with that, staff recommends approval of this amendment, and I'm here for any questions.
Thank you, Shane. And open up, any clarifying questions from council? And I know we've got a few similar items, so I'd say too, if you just have any questions on these types of items in general, feel free to ask them on this item. All right. Seeing none, we'll open it up to any public comment on this item tonight. All right. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and look for a motion and resolution determining an area of the city to be an economic development and blighted area, and that the rehabilitation, conservation, redevelopment, development, or a combination thereof of such area as necessary in the interest of public health, safety, or welfare of the residents of the city, designating such area as appropriate for urban renewal projects, and adopting amendment number two to the College Hill Urban Renewal Plan.
So moved.
Second.
Motion seconded, and any council discussion? All right. Seeing none, requires a roll call vote, please.
All members voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. That motion carries. Takes item number six, public hearing on a proposed amendment number seven to the downtown development urban area urban renewal plan. Is there a motion to receive and file?
So moved.
Second.
Motion seconded, and all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion carries. Madam Clerk, any written communications?
I have no written communications, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. And then, again, for staff comments, we've got Shane.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, this is amendment number seven to the downtown development urban renewal plan. Again, council set the date of hearing on October 6th, had the same consultation session on October 15th with no one in attendance. The main changes to this amendment are to, again, modify budget figures of existing, to existing projects, public improvements, and land acquisition. So, we're not adding any area or taking any area out. It's, again, looking at future projects and modifying those budgets so they can comply with those projects when they come forward.
Any clarifying questions from council? All right. Seeing none, we'll open this one up to the public as well, if anyone would like to speak tonight. Also seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and look for a motion and resolution determining an area of the city to be an economic development and blighted area, and that the rehabilitation, conservation, redevelopment, development, or a combination thereof of such area as necessary in the interest of the public health, safety, or welfare of the residents of the city, designating such area as appropriate for urban renewal projects, and adopting amendment number seven to the downtown development area urban renewal plan.
So moved.
Second.
Motion seconded, and any discussion from council? All right. Seeing none, requires a roll call vote, please.
All members voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. That motion carries. Takes this item number seven, public hearing on a proposed amendment number three to the Pinnacle Prairie Urban Commercial Urban Renewal Plan. We have motion, can't get these words the same. Do we have a motion to receive and file, proof publication?
So moved.
Motion seconded, and all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. That motion carries. Madam Clerk, any written communications?
I have no written communications, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. And it's all yours, Shane.
Thank you, Mayor. This project is amendment number three to Pinnacle Prairie Commercial Urban Renewal Plan. Basically, we're just modifying one project within the plan. It's for streets, street and other infrastructure costs, and this is mainly tied to the roundabout project that's going on at Viking and Pinnacle Prairie Parkway, so.
Any questions from council? All right. Thank you, Shane.
Thank you.
And others, open up, anyone from the public who'd like to speak on this item Just name, please.
Kim Johnson-Jordan. I'm not sure if this is the one within the packet where we were coming off of Hudson Road, and we were going to be turning to go to east, and we were adding a section of land to that development.
Ms. Jordan, this would be only for discussion on the changes to the urban renewal plan. No actual discussion about the roundabouts themselves, the projects. Just a question on the projects within it, or any changes in allocations. Just to clarify though, it is the roundabout over, kind of out by Menards?
Okay.
The Viking Road Roundabout out there, I believe. Question?
It's just not a good idea to, like, give the land away and then have to get it back. I guess if those are changes, if you're modifying from what was originally agreed upon, and then you're modifying it.
And I believe Shane, it's just modifying the cost expenditures and not changing anything about giving land. It's just the cost estimates.
Correct.
Once we've got updated numbers.
Correct.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Jordan Johnson. Anyone else from the public that would like to speak tonight? All right. Seeing none, we will close the public comment and look for a motion and resolution determining an area of the city to be an economic development area, and that the rehabilitation, conservation, redevelopment, development, or a combination thereof of such area as necessary in the interest of the public health, safety, or welfare of the residents of the city, designating such area as appropriate for urban renewal projects, and adopting amendment number three to the Pinnacle Prairie Commercial Urban Renewal Plan.
So moved.
Second.
Motion seconded, and any discussion from council? Seeing none, requires a roll call vote, please.
All members voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. That motion carries. That moves us to item number eight, public hearing on proposed amendment number seven to the Cedar Falls Unified Highway 58 Corridor Urban Renewal Plan. Do we have a motion to receive and file?
So moved.
Motion seconded, and all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Madam Clerk, any written communications?
I have no written communications, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. And it's all yours, Shane.
Thank you, Mayor. This one actually does involve a little more than just project amendments. This, it does involve some removal of land. So, with amendment number seven, there are two primary objectives through this amendment. One is to remove 17 parcels of land that are located in the West Viking Road Industrial Park west of Target. Council may remember that that area expired last summer, July 1st of 2025, and I believe council took action last December to basically amend the ordinance to stop tax collections at that time. So, as of right now, we have 17 undeveloped parcels that are still within that West Viking Road Industrial Park. So, what we want to do is remove those from the unified, which then will be on, which the next item on the agenda is the South Cedar Falls Amendment, is to add those parcels to that. The second objective then with this amendment is to remove an area from the plan that had been, that had expired in 2016. However, it was left in at that time because there were several active tax rebate agreements that were going on. Since there were active tax rebate agreements, we could not remove the area from the urban renewal plan. Had to leave it in the plan until those tax rebate agreements had finished. Those two that were ongoing at the time in 2016 have been completed, so we want to take action now to officially remove this area from the urban renewal plan and the ordinance as well.
And any clarifying questions for Chase on this item? Did you have some? Or are you just looking at me in preparation?
Shane.
That's Shane.
Did I say Chase? Damn it. I'm sorry to both of you. It's, I'm not the only one that does it, so it's a thing.
They're not interchangeable.
I see it now. I see it.
They are not interchangeable. They both have very valid professional skills in different areas, so I appreciate both of you.
So, Mr. Mayor?
Equally.
So Shane, just for simplifying, taking the 17 and putting it into a different TIF district so that it can still qualify? Is that?
Correct. Yes.
Simple. Thank you.
Thank you, counselor. Any other clarifying questions from council for Shane? All right. Seeing none, we'll open up to public comment. Anyone from the public that would like to speak on this item tonight?
There you go.
Just name again, please.
Kim Johnson-Jordan. I just, there's a lot of people that sit at home, and they are looking at this and wondering, what's the purpose of all of this? And why are we creating entitlement for just different little groups? Is there a good answer for that? Is it a general ledger, accounting nightmare that we're creating here? And is it going to be a situation where we have an ability to have a consistent change across each district? When we have infrastructure problems with the sewer, or any water issues? Because currently, we have those ongoing increases going until 2027. And we're just sitting here passing all of these, it's hitting the pockets of the taxpayers, and it's, we're separating out all of these things. And yet, when we look at what we're expected to do with our own sidewalks, we don't have our little TIF districts to help us occur anything that's going to take some pressure off the taxpayer, or that homeowner that's right there. So, why do we need them? What's the advantage for the citizens, the 40,000 people here that we are responsible for?
And that is a, thank you, Ms. Jordan Johnson. It's a very valid question. You know, TIF is something that gets discussed a lot. I think all of us are familiar with the conversation. So, for projects like these, our industrial parks, the specific intent within the industrial parks is, a lot of these, the TIF incentive is essentially taking potential future revenue, but helping us put the infrastructure in place to attract businesses. So, these 17 properties that we're looking to move this time currently are vacant, so they're within those industrial parks, but never got developed, never had a business who looked to come and get those. The city still owns the land, so we still have an incentive to want to attract business users, commercial and industrial users, to come to these areas. So, a lot of the times, what these projects do is they allow us, we have specific criteria on what's allowed. For our industrial parks, often you have to build at least a 10,000-square-foot industrial building, and the intent is to create both jobs within the area and the economic value added to the area for job growth, and then also that commercial property tax growth in the area. You know, the big key project, you always use that as an example, is Target Distribution was an incredibly large project. That often, we're competing with other communities to try and bring these companies in. So, these are tools we use to try and provide an incentive to companies looking to invest in those areas and the industrial parks. But to your point about the concern for, you know, how is it fair to the community? We do have very specific criteria of the types of companies, the use of the land. We won't just sell that land to anybody. They have to show that they're bringing economic value to the community through new job creation, taxable asset growth. And so, it is always a question of, you know, how much are we incentivizing versus would they have built without the incentives? And I think that's always a conversation we have to continually look at, is how are we competing on those incentives to make sure we attract quality job growth? Because it's a competitive market. It's a very competitive market. And so it's a very fair question because we are providing, using future tax dollars to invest in some of that infrastructure now to be able to do that attraction. And so I do appreciate the question though, because it's something we need to be very actively intentional about what incentives we offer and how we offer those. So Shane, you have anything you want to add?
Oh, just one thing. You did a very good job of explaining that, though. You kind of hit on at the end, the infrastructure part. So what we're, what TIF allows us to do is capture all the taxes, the school, the county, the city's portion, and repay ourselves for infrastructure projects. Incentives is only a small piece of it. The project going on at Ridgeway and Hudson Road right now, we're getting land ready right now. We're using, going to use TIF to basically pay for the entire development of that, getting the roads ready, extending infrastructure. So yeah, the incentive pieces is a piece of it, but we're also going to pay that off much sooner. We don't have to go out and GO bond, which those, the taxpayers do have to pay for that. So yeah, we look at it at all those different angles.
And thank you for clarifying that. I shouldn't focus so much on just the incentive piece, but.
Mr. Mayor, one other thing, you could, somebody could explain the backfill for the schools?
Yes, and then, so the school portion, there's the three portions of your county taxes, welcome to TIF one oh one, everybody. And it's essentially your school portion, the city portion that we receive, and then the county portion. And the schools, though, do get reimbursed through backfill from the state. So we may collect that, but the state backfills that, so the schools aren't out of their tax money in that case. That is why, if you notice, though, in each of these instances, we do have to hold a meeting with those other taxing entities, with the schools and the county, so that they have a chance, if they'd like to come and voice their concern with the project or speak against it, that we have to then go through a process to review those comments and bring that to Council before we do it. So often, these have to be collaborative projects with the county to make sure we're growing the tax base for the whole region and not kind of doing things just for us at the expense of the whole community. So, thank you, Counselor.
Good job.
Thank you. All right, any other clarifying questions from Council? Or, excuse me, we're in public comment. Any other public comment for this, this evening? We've already, we can come back later if we have another item. Any other comments for this item tonight? All right, seeing none, we will close the public hearing and look for a motion and resolution determining an area of the city to be an economic development area and that the rehabilitation, conservation, redevelopment, development, or a combination thereof of such area is necessary in the interest of the public health, safety, or welfare of the residents of the city, designating such an area as appropriate for urban renewal projects and adopting Amendment Number Seven to the Cedar Falls Unified Highway Fifty-Eight Corridor Urban Renewal Plan.
So moved.
Second.
Motion seconded, and any discussion from Council? All right, seeing none, requires a roll call vote, please.
All members voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. That moves us to item number nine. Look for a motion to pass an ordinance amending ordinance number nineteen twenty-three, twenty-one twenty-two, twenty-four sixty-one, twenty-six ninety-six, twenty-seven eighty-five, twenty-nine twenty-three, twenty-nine fifty-three, and thirty-eighty-six, providing that general property taxes levied and collected each year on certain property located within the amended Cedar Falls Unified Highway Fifty-Eight Corridor Urban Renewal Area in the city of Cedar Falls, County of Blackhawk, State of Iowa, by or for the benefit of the State of Iowa, City of Cedar Falls, County of Blackhawk, Cedar Falls Community School District, Anne Dyke New Hartford Community School District, and other taxing entities, other taxing districts, be paid to a special fund for payment of principal and interest on loans, money as advanced to and in indebtedness, including bonds issued or to be issued incurred by the city in connection with the amended Cedar Falls Unified Highway Fifty-Eight Corridor Urban Renewal Area, the twenty-twenty-five removal of parcels upon its first consideration contingent upon the previous item.
So moved.
Second.
Motion seconded, and any discussion from Council? All right, seeing none, any from the public? If any of that made sense? Just name for the record again, please.
Okay, so, Kim Johnson, Jordan, removal of parcels. So we're removing them from tax base, so there's nothing that's being generated, and yet we do not have them sold at a current time. That, I guess, is, I'm held up on that. I don't understand why we would remove land that is going to provide tax base to be earning and occurring interest.
Thank you, Ms. Jordan Johnson. And quick clarification that, so these properties are currently owned by the city, so they are not producing any tax base. They are land that we own, that we plan to try and attract a business or an entity to buy from us to then develop, at which point then the goal would be for them to create taxable value. But currently, they're owned, it's own property by the city that is not producing any taxes for the community.
Yeah, I was just going to mention that they also had run their twenty-year time limit, so we can't collect on it anyhow unless we do something of which we're proposing to do with the next item on the agenda.
Thanks, Shane. Any other public comment on this item tonight? All right, seeing none, bring it back to Council. Any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
Just for clarity, Shane, if you would, I'm assuming this is removing it, but there's no actual tax basis where this is, it's resetting the base point in the new district in the next item, correct? I mean, if we remove something that had been improved in this fashion, we would release those increments, but there isn't any increment on these parcels because they're vacant.
Correct. And with Council's action last December, this whole area, or most of those other areas were taken out, or even the buildable, the buildable.
So those were all released to the citizens?
Correct.
Tax, the taxpayers' pocketbook already?
As of July first.
So the incentive paid off. We actually gave some tax relief back with these industrial park TIFs.
Correct.
Cool, thanks.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other additional discussion from Council? All right, seeing none, requires a roll call vote, please.
All members voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. That motion carries. That brings us to item number ten, Public Hearing on a Proposed Amendment Number One to the South Cedar Falls Urban Renewal Plan. Do we have motion to receive and file?
So moved.
Second.
Receives, excuse me, motion seconded, and all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries. Madam Clerk, any written communications?
I have no written communications, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, and staff comments?
Thank you, Mayor. I think this is the last public hearing I'm going, so I'm almost done. Okay, so Amendment One of the South Cedar Falls Urban Renewal Plan, two objectives here. One is that we are updating the budget figures of several of the projects. Again, with the beginning of the project that the city's undertaking at the corner of Hudson and Ridgeway, we're starting to know some of those budget items, and so we're already starting to adjust some of the project budgets in the urban renewal plan, because those were all done prior to knowing what the true cost of any of this would be. And then again, the second item then is then adding those seventeen parcels that Council just approved to be removed out of the unified and then putting that in with the South Cedar Falls. And I forgot to mention, but in your packet, you, there was a map for each one. There was a map in the unified showing what parcels were being removed, and then there's a map also in this one showing what parcels are being added.
And really quick, Shane, if you could, because these, all the urban renewal or these areas do have an expiration date. This is not a new area. And do you remember off the top of your head what the expiration date is for the South Cedar Falls? It's about?
So the South Cedar Falls Urban Renewal Plan, I believe, was adopted in 2018. So I think 2039 is when the last year of tax collections on that. This area being added will have its own twenty-year. So that would have its own twenty-year in addition to the current area.
Any clarifying questions from Council? All right, thank you, Shane. Yep, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, yeah, just double checking. These all have to be contiguous, and so we've included some street connections there. So these are all part of that unified district now, correct?
Correct, yeah. That's exactly why we included the right-of-way, so they could physically connect with the South Cedar Falls Urban Renewal Area.
Any other clarifying questions from Council? Thank you, Shane. Seeing none, we'll open it up to any public comment on this item tonight. Just name for the record again, please.
Kim Johnson, Jordan. This is where I was looking at the packet. I don't know if it has something that can be popped up on the screen. But as we're coming off of Hudson Road and we're coming northbound into Cedar Falls and you turn right to head east onto Ridgeway, there's a pie section within a parcel that's been created. And there's right-of-way that's being added to that that wasn't there in 2017 or 2018. That Ridgeway also has additional roundabouts that I don't believe are currently there yet. But if there was modifications to the road infrastructure and an extra turn lane was made instead of considering that we would have additional roundabouts that are going to interfere with the cross-the-street traffic that's coming out on the south end, or the north end with the seventeen lots that are on the south end. It would be a better flow not to give that pie shape of land back to those parcels.
Mr. Mayor, I apologize, we're not really discussing the design of the project for these items, it's just the changes to the urban renewal area.
Yeah. It really, it's counterintuitive to give land back, especially when those roads haven't been conserved yet and then have to give that back.
Apologies, we're not giving any land back to anybody, so, thank you. Any other public comment on this item tonight? All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and look for a motion and resolution determining an area of the city to be an economic development area and that the rehabilitation, conservation, redevelopment, development, or a combination thereof of such area is necessary in the interest of the public health, safety, or welfare of the health of the residents of the city, designating such area as appropriate for urban renewal projects and adopting Amendment Number One to the South Cedar Falls Urban Renewal Plan.
So moved.
Second.
Motion seconded, any discussion from Council? All right, seeing none, requires a roll call vote, please.
All members voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. That motion carries. Brings us to item number eleven, which is contingent upon the previous item. Let's look for a motion to pass an ordinance amending ordinance number two-nine-two-six, providing that general property taxes levied and collected each year on all property located within the amended South Cedar Falls Urban Renewal Area in the city of Cedar Falls, County of Blackhawk, State of Iowa, by or for the benefit of the State of Iowa, City of Cedar Falls, County of Blackhawk, Cedar Falls Community School District, and Hudson Community School District, and other taxing districts, be paid to a special fund for payment of principal and interest on loans, money as advanced to an indebtedness, including bonds issued or to be issued incurred by the city in connection with the amended South Cedar Falls Urban Renewal Area, Amendment Number One to the South Cedar Falls Urban Renewal Plan upon its first consideration.
So moved.
Motion seconded, and any discussion from Council? All right, seeing none, any from the public? Also seeing none, bring it back to Council, requires a roll call vote, please.
All members voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. That motion carries. And thank you, Shane, for all your time on those items. That brings us to item number twelve for passed ordinance number three-one-two-five, amending chapter twenty-six zoning of the Code of Ordinances relative to the requirement to obtain a land use permit, to be clarified in a new section, twenty-six twenty-six, application of provisions, and a re-titled section, twenty-six twenty-nine, land use permit upon its third and final consideration. Do we motion to approve?
Second.
Motion seconded, and any discussion from Council? Seeing none, any from the public? Also seeing none, requires a roll call vote, please.
Five voting aye, two voting nay, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. That motion carries. Item number thirteen, pass ordinance number three-one-two-six, amending chapter twenty-six zoning of the Code of Ordinances relative to regulations governing the allowance of accessory dwelling units as outlined in section twenty-six one forty-two, accessory uses, section twenty-six one nine three point one, general provisions, section twenty-six one nine three point four, neighborhood median frontage, section twenty-six one nine seven, building functions, and section twenty-six one-two-six, detached accessory structures upon its third and final consideration. Motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion seconded, any discussion from Council? Seeing none, any from the public? Also seeing none, requires a roll call vote, please.
All members voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Takes item fourteen, pass ordinance number three-one-two-seven, amending chapter twenty-six zoning of the Code of Ordinances relative to parking requirements for studios and one-bedroom apartments and multi-unit buildings as outlined in section twenty-six two twenty, off-street parking spaces, and section twenty-six one-eight-one, the College Hill Neighborhood, College Hill, the acronym is the name, overlay zoning district upon its third and final consideration.
So moved.
Second.
Motion seconded, any discussion from Council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
Just a quick comment. I voted no on this last time. I wanted to clarify so people remember that. I think the code needs a definition of studios and single-family, or, excuse me, one-bedroom apartments. Couple other cities have used a square footage delineation, and I think that's needed for us to have a complete and proper code for parking spots for that scenario. And I'll probably bring a referral sometime soon. Forward to look at that. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other discussion from Council? All right, seeing none, any from the public? Also seeing none, requires a roll call vote, please.
Six voting aye, one voting nay, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. That motion carries. Item number fifteen, pass ordinance number three-one-two-eight, amending ordinance number three-zero-nine-seven and designating the multi-residential urban revitalization area for the Cedar Falls Multi-Residential Urban Revitalization Plan for the city of Cedar Falls, Amendment Number One, upon its second consideration. Do we motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion seconded, and any discussion from Council? Seeing none, any from the public? Also seeing none, requires a roll call vote, please.
All members voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. That motion carries. Takes item sixteen, pass ordinance number three-one-two-nine, amending chapter seven, buildings and building regulations of the Code of Ordinances relative to amendments, National Electrical Code adoption and National Electrical Code amendments upon its second consideration. Do we motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second, any discussion from Council? Seeing none, any from the public? Also seeing none, roll call vote, please.
All members voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. That motion carries. Item seventeen, pass ordinance number three-one-three-zero, amending the zoning map by removing approximately zero point one five acres of land located at twenty-three oh nine Main Street from R four, multiple residence district to C two, commercial district upon its second consideration. Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion seconded, any discussion from Council? Seeing none, any from the public? Just name again for the record, please.
Kim Johnson, Jordan. We're taking residential and moving it into commercial, and we've been talking about commercial development on the south side. I think we're pushing a lot into an area where we already know that we have parking issues, and Main Street is not as usable, I would say, as what it was once with four lanes. So I, I do have a concern with taking away residence, residential use or properties and then adding more commercial.
Thank you, Ms. Jordan Johnson. So anyone else from the public on this item tonight, please? All right, seeing none, bring it back to Council. Any further discussion? All right, seeing none, requires a roll call vote, please.
Kim?
You okay?
Is yours not working, Gil?
No. It went away.
Chris, can you back him up?
I think he said, well.
Thumbs up? Or we can voice vote you.
Yeah. I think it's a great idea to improve that corner. I'm going to vote yes.
You just went green, Gil. We're all good.
Well, they didn't do anything here.
All right, that motion carries. Moves us to item number eighteen, pass ordinance number three-one-three-one, amending chapter sixteen offenses and miscellaneous provisions of the Code of Ordinances relative to fireworks upon its second consideration.
So moved.
Second.
Motion seconded, any discussion from Council? And again, just to clarify this item, we're required by state law to make these changes. I know I did hear a few concerns after the first reading, but this is a state-required change based on their, their laws, so not something we're choosing to do at a local level. Seeing nothing from Council, any discussion from the public? All right, also seeing none, requires a roll call vote, please.
All members voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. That motion carries. Moves us to item nineteen, pass ordinance number three-one-three-two, amending chapter two, administration of the Code of Ordinances relative to powers and duties upon its second consideration. Do we motion to approve?
Second.
Motion seconded, and any discussion from Council? Seeing none, any from the public? Also seeing none, requires a roll call vote, please.
All members voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. That motion carries. Takes us to the consent calendar. So the following items will be acted upon by a voice vote on a single motion without separate discussion unless someone from Council or public requests that it be considered separately. Are there any from Council?
Twenty-three.
Twenty-three. Any others? All right, seeing none, any from the public? All right, also seeing none, I'll look for motion to approve items twenty through twenty-four of the consent calendar excluding item twenty-three.
So moved.
Second.
Motion seconded, and all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries, that takes us to item number twenty-three, look for a motion to receive and file the biannual report of Community Main Street relative to fiscal year twenty-six self-supported municipal improvement districts, mid-funds, and an FY twenty-six economic development grant. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion seconded, and Counselor?
I just wanted to give Kim the opportunity to not spend her whole evening here and not brag on all the great things that are happening in downtown Cedar Falls, and all the great work that she does, and all the great work that the volunteers do, and, and her team. It's just wonderful stuff, so.
So you want to not take up her time by pulling the items?
Well, she's been, I know, I saw her sneak in, so I knew she was out there, so.
Second that.
Okay.
Thank you, Counselor.
That's it.
Any other discussion from counsel? All right, seeing none, any from the public? Kim walked away. Not doing it. All right, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries, thank you, Kim. Other Kim, not you, but thank you, too. That brings us to the resolution calendar, so the following items will be acted upon by a roll call vote and a single motion without separate discussion, unless someone from the counsel or public requests that an item be considered separately. Are there any requests from counsel? Give you a second.
I, I won't list them all, we'll just, I'll go with twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight. Got it. Any others from counsel? All right, seeing none, any from the public?
Just for clarity, Gil, are you just wanting to talk topically about all those items?
Well, I, I would like Mrs. Rodenbeck to, just for, for the knowledge leveling, to go, here's what these mean.
Nope, perfect, I know Councilperson Cruz asked the same thing, so I don't know if you want me to do that right now, Mayor?
Yeah, go ahead, so we can not have to pull them all, and not also weirdly have to come back.
And then not know why we pulled them.
Yep.
As you can see, tonight's kind of the TIF night, we have lots of things that are due by December first, so that's why they come every year at this time, but one of the things we do is, not only are we reporting what we did this last year, then we're certifying what we have for expenses this upcoming year, but part of that is also you'll see multiple resolutions there where we're borrowing from ourselves, and so instead of, for a lot of our projects, instead of going and sell bonds, we're actually cash flowing them from a different fund, so, for instance, like the one Councilperson Schultz talked about is, we may be paying for something out of a stormwater fund, like the box culvert, but then the TIF, when we collect the revenues, will pay back that fund, and so we had some legal advice years ago from others that we need to really kind of create that debt instrument then between the two funds to show we have a debt so we can certify it. So that's what all of those are for, so you can see we kind of have them for multiple TIF districts, maybe multiple funds, that's why there's so many.
And we'll see, just from an accounting standpoint, I think a really good way for us to be able to account for where those funds are coming from, how we're doing these projects, and how they get paid back.
Yep.
Transparency.
Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
Could we also do that for items forty-one through forty-five, forty-six?
Just a quick description of them?
Yeah.
And those, I think Shane is still here, we can speak to them as well, these are our new historic urban core, urban revitalization area, this is the, our intentional focus to make sure we're not just trying to encourage new housing developments on the edge of town, but also ensuring we're encouraging those infill development projects. We believe we have a few here that are new builds, one for sure, that's, I believe, an expansion on an existing home, Shane, if you want to give a quick?
Yeah, on, on all of them, so again, in April, city council adopted the Cedar Falls Historic Core Urban Revitalization Area, you know, the general boundaries, First Street to University, Hudson Road over to around Highway Fifty-Eight, and again, this is, these are the first applications that are coming in under this new program. As the mayor said, there's, I think, three, one, two, three, four, five new duplexes, and then also a home remodel, so again, what this, the urban revitalization area will do will provide a tax abatement on the increased valuation of the project, and that will be for a period of ten years, and that does not include the school tax portion, I think I mentioned this when we're going through the adoption process, but as of July first of twenty-twenty-four, the state legislature changed the state code to now basically not allow the school tax to be touched as part of urban revitalization. I'd be happy to answer any other questions if you have any on any of the specific applications.
And just to help, too, for anyone watching, or for us up here, it's only on the new increment, so that one home, for example, that had the, was it remodel or an expansion? That additional value to their home, they'll still pay taxes on the previous value of their home, it's just any new value they added to it will have that exemption, so it doesn't kind of take away anything we were making previously from these lots, and same with like the land values, if they're a vacant lot, that land value is still getting taxed, but then the building value on top of that would be qualified.
Just improvement value, correct.
Thank you, Shane.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments from counsel before we?
Quick question, then, I guess, maybe for Shane, is there a minimum improvement amount you have to have to qualify?
Yes, so for residential, it's got to increase the value by ten percent or more, and for any commercial, it's got to be fifteen percent or more, and that determination's made by the county assessor, so once these, if they're approved tonight, we send these applications to the county, county will look at, at their records and our records and see what that valuation is, and as long as it meets that ten percent, then the county will adjust the taxes according on that improved value.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Shane. So Gil, are you withdrawing your polling of item twenty-eight?
I didn't know if I, if it made the list, but yes, I would, I'm satisfied, thank you.
I wouldn't go that far, but.
Yeah.
So any other items from counsel? Currently, I don't believe we have any, so. Okay, let's say none from counsel then, or do you have any from the public? All right, seeing none, they'll look for a motion to approve items twenty-five through fifty-four of the resolution calendar.
So moved.
I know I kind of said that like there was a question at the end, but then I realized there was nothing to exclude, so I apologize.
Second.
Motion seconded, and roll call vote, please.
All members voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, that motion carries, which brings us to bills and claims, we have motion to allow bills and claims for November third, twenty-twenty-five.
I would like to pay the bills.
We have a motion? Did someone second it? Motion seconded, any discussion from counsel? All right, seeing none, any from the public? Also seeing none, requires a roll call vote, please.
All members voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, that motion carries, any council updates or announcements? Seeing none, any, we do have a council referral, item number fifty-six, look for a motion to refer a discussion to review the fee associated with a land use permit and when it needs to apply submitted by Councilor Cruz. Do we have a motion to approve?
So.
Motion seconded, so open for discussion, Counselor.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. At the last meeting, we kind of beat up on the thoughts of having a land use permit and how and when, and the, and the price of it, and it was mentioned quite clearly that we would have another opportunity in the future to discuss the fee itself, and I'm taking that opportunity here to put it on the agenda for probably a committee meeting, I'm guessing, to see when we want to maybe include it in the building permit fee, we could put better links on our website to track and understand easements on your own property, various things like that, so that we may not need a fee, or what could the fee be for a land use permit? Question was brought up, should property taxes that a citizen already pay get some consultation from staff on their own property, that sort of thing.
Okay, thank you, Counselor, so open discussion on having the discussion on the land use fees, we want to submit for a committee discussion, so just discuss if we'd like to do that, and if so, then we can set a date afterwards, but any discussion on wanting to have that discussion?
I have a question for, I believe, Jennifer, we review, when's the annual review of, of the fees?
Sure.
August?
No, usually it comes in May or June, because we'll have them effective July first with our new fiscal year, so usually we're sending that fee scheduled through May, June.
Any other questions from, discussion from counsel? All right, so, and I'll look for just a voice vote here, all those in favor of having discussion?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
That motion does not carry. And that takes us to adjournment, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Motion seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries, we are adjourned, thank you, everyone, thank you to Mr. Kowalski's class, I'm assuming, who is here for some of you the second time, some of you the first, have a great night, and everyone be sure to go vote tomorrow if you haven't already voted, and it doesn't matter who you vote for, just be sure to vote. Thank you, everyone. I should say it doesn't matter who, it does matter who, but I have no opinion of who you vote for.